In the third year of Cyrus, king of Persia, a thing was revealed unto Daniel, whose name was called Belteshazzar. And the thing was true, but the time appointed was long. And he understood the thing, and had understanding of the vision. In those days, I, Daniel, was mourning three full weeks, 21 days. I ate no pleasant bread; neither came flesh nor wine in my mouth; neither did I anoint myself at all, till three whole weeks were fulfilled. And in the for and twentieth day of the first month, as I was by the side of the great river, which is Hiddekel, that's the Tigris River, another name for Tigris River, then I lifted up mine eyes and looked; behold, a certain man clothed in linen, whose loins were girted with fine gold of euphas. His body also was like the barrel, and his face as the appearance of lightning, and his eyes as lamps of fire, and his arms and his feet like in color to polished brass, and the voice of his words like the voice of a multitude. And I, Daniel, alone saw the vision; for the men that were with me saw not the vision, but a great quaking fell upon them, so that they fled to hide themselves. Therefore I was left alone and saw this great vision; and there remained no strength in me; for my comeliness was turned in me into corruption; and I retained no strength. Yet heard I the voice of his words; and when I heard the voice of his words, then was I in a deep sleep on my face, and my face toward the ground. Behold, a hand touched me, which set me upon my knees and upon the palms of my hands. And he said unto me, O Daniel, a man greatly beloved, understand the words that I speak unto thee and stand upright; for unto thee am I now sent. And when he had spoken this word unto me, I stood trembling. Then said he unto me, Fear not, Daniel; for from the first day that thou didst set thine heart to understand and to chasten thyself before thy God, thy words were heard; and I am come for thy words. But the prince of the kingdom of Persia withstood me one and twenty days, 21 days. But lo, Michael, one of the chief princes, came to help me; and I remained there with the king of Persia. Now I am come to make thee understand what shall befall thy people in the latter days; for yet the vision is for many days. And when he had spoken such words unto me, I set my face toward the ground, and I became dumb. Doesn't mean he was stupid; it meant that he couldn't speak. And behold, one like the similitude of the sons of men touched my lips. Then I opened my mouth and spake and said unto him that stood before me, O my Lord, by the vision my sorrows are turned upon me; and I have retained no strength. For how can the servant of this my Lord talk with this my Lord? For as for me straightway there remained no strength in me; neither is their breath left in me. He's winded. Verse 18. Then there came again and touched me. This is the third time we've read that heaven's touch came to him. It said, like the appearance of a man; and he strengthened me and said, O man greatly beloved, fear not; peace be unto thee; be strong; yea, be strong. And when he had spoken unto me, I was strengthened and said, Let my Lord speak; for thou hast strengthened me. Then said he, Knowest thou wherefore I come unto thee? And now will I return to fight with the prince of Persia; and when I am gone forth, lo, the prince of Grecia shall come; but I will show thee that which is noted in the Scripture of truth; and there's none that holdeth with me in these things but Michael, your prince. My title for the chapter is this: Have you had any special meetings with God? Have you had any special meetings with God? Daniel, at this time, in this chapter, is ninety years of age; and he's still seeking God; he's still talking to God; he's still hearing from God; he's still learning from God; he's still living for God; and he's still walking with God. Ninety years of age, still at it. Daniel had some special meetings with the Lord in his lifetime. And the wonderful thing is, at ninety years of age, he is still having special meetings with God in his life. I would note verse 1. There's a day or a date given to us. You'd find in the 10th chapter, verse 1; in the 9th chapter, verse 1; in the 8th chapter, verse 1; in the 7th chapter, verse 1. God does special stuff in the life of Daniel; and every time he remembers dates and a time when something happened in his life, when he experienced God in his life, I wonder, do we have any special meetings with God like Daniel has had? Do we remember dates where God gave us special meetings? You do know that the child of God, that he or she does do have special visitations from God in their lives? God came to you at some point in time, if you're saved. God came to you at some point in time with conviction and conversion. There was a time whenever God came, and you knew deep in your soul that you were in trouble with God; and you came under conviction. You couldn't explain it all; all you knew, you was in trouble with God. And God worked the work; and the spirit of God converted you and changed you and put you in the family of God and convinced you. All of that operation took place at some time in life. Somebody says, Well, I don't remember the exact date. No, but you sure remember the meeting with God? If you've ever been saved. Everybody has special meetings with God. Maybe it was a time whenever God comforted you in special, unusual fashion in some trouble of life. Maybe it was that God came and called you to a particular task; and God confirmed what he wanted for your life and his will for your life. Or it might have been just a real worship experience. I mean something that's unusual. We worship God all the time; but there are times whenever God will give you something special; and you will remember those times in your life, just like Daniel is dating particular experiences with God in his life. So God gives us special times; and you'll remember it. You'll remember it. You might not remember the date and log it down as far as saying that it's nice in the first or something like that; but we will know for sure that there's a time whenever God came to deal with our hearts. I wouldn't mention that your meetings don't have to be exactly like Daniel's meetings were. He had a dream; and he had a vision; and an angel visited him. I've never had that. I've just never had an angel come. If I did, my angel underwear, Diana's gapped her mouth. She expects me to think that she's an angel in my life. That's an insider joke. You know what's happening, though? Daniel's receiving divine revelation; he's receiving holy Scripture. God is doing something extraordinary and special in Daniel's life; and so God is doing stuff to confirm particular word of God to him, Scripture of truth. And listen, nobody's getting that anymore. The Bible, the word of God is the faith once delivered unto the saints; it has already been delivered; and it's not coming anymore. It's already done. It's completed. The canon of Scripture is complete. So God did some very unusual things for him. So, but here we have in the chapter, the Lord letting us see the interactings between God Almighty and his servant, Daniel. And so that's what we see in the chapter, this heavenly interaction. So, let's see what's involved in this heavenly interaction. There are five things in the chapter that are involved in the heavenly interaction. First, there is a mourning involved. Verse 2 through 4. We're told Daniel mourns for three weeks. He's sad; he's weeping; he's grief-stricken; he's in deep sorrow. Why is he mourning? What's created this mourning? Well, there's a number of possibilities. The first I would mention is because of Jewish apathy. There's an apathy. King Cyrus has already given permission to go back to Jerusalem to build the temple, already given the city, go back and rebuild; and word has come; and there was, there were less than 50,000 people, we're told, out of all of the great multitude of people, that's a small number, who went back. And so, no doubt about it, there's discouragement in 90-year-old Daniel about the fact that the people did not go back to rebuild. They were comfortable; they were content in their comfortable condition in Babylon, in a strange land, in a foreign land. So they weren't much interested to go back to that land. Many of them had never even been to the homeland. They'd been born down in Babylon; now they were prosperous. We're told that they even had servants. They were servants themselves in foreign land; and yet they themselves had servants; the servants had servants. They were prosperous in Babylon; and it prevented them from going back. Why? Because it would be hard work. Oh, no, there's nothing but rubble back there. We've got to clean the mess up and then rebuild it all. Why would we want to go? Listen, I'll tell you why you want to go; because it's the will of God. There's the problem with this. Often, we're not so concerned about the will of God; we're concerned about comfort. And so, Daniel's burdened about this whole thing. Not to mention that Daniel himself probably cannot go back. It's a thousand miles back home. In that day, you didn't have airplane or you didn't have whatever taxi, something. And so this older generation, a lot of them have already died off; and Daniel's remaining; but he can't go back himself to do the work. What kind of help's he going to be? And so he's got this burden that he's carrying. Going back to Jerusalem meant going back to their God-given place, their God-given land, land God had given them, to their God-given place of worship. See, it was in Babylon that the synagogues first started. And so they made their own place to assemble; and thank God they made the best of where they were and what they were doing at the time; but listen, it still was God's preeminent will for them to get to the temple, rebuild the temple, reinstitute the sacrifices. It'll take more than just reading the word of God to people or something. It'll take blood sacrifice for sins to be forgiven. That's why you have Daniel at certain times of the year and day, the evening, at the time of the evening sacrifice, we'll read here. He's praying; they're talking to God at that particular time because they know that's the time God ordained for worship at the temple, even though they couldn't be at the temple. Don't settle for a substitute worship. I wonder, Daniel is mourning about the condition; the work has been stopped; it's been fought; it's been hindered; it's been stopped; and it's a burden to Daniel. It's driven him to sadness. I wonder, do you and I ever mourn because of the spiritual condition of people? Apathy? Oh, I can just take it or leave it. Oh, God, the Bible, church, the will of God, I can take it or leave it. Apathy, indifference, all about self, disregard for the Savior. It's about their will, not God's will. That's where their heart's at. Wonder, does it ever burden us? Or do we just get used to it in a time of prosperity? Opportunity has come now. Seventy years, they've been prevented from doing this; and now the door's wide open; and nobody wants to enter the door. That's what it is. That's what we've got. Think about the modern-day church. Does it burden you about the modern-day church? Albert Mohler, The Briefing. Let me give you three headlines. Just the headline; I won't go into any detail. Listen to the headlines. A senate candidate in Georgia supports unrestricted abortion rights... dot, dot, dot. And he's a pastor. That was this week, Friday. Posted headline. Unrestricted abortion. You do know that it's murder. God said it is. And you'd think a pastor would know. You'd think a pastor'd have enough sense not to run for senate, knowing he's gonna have to spend his life lying. But he's unrestricted, all the way up to time of birth. You can kill, suck the life out, suck the brains out, do whatever you want, however you want, just as long as you get rid of it! Full-grown nine-month-old baby! A pastor. What about the modern-day effort to brainwash our children with immorality? Headline: There's a revolution coming for your child's toys. Will their toy box meet the culture's demands? And then it goes on to talk about how that they're producing transgender toys, and on and on and on. Another headline: What's coming next to Disney Channel? Apparently, the LGBTQ revolution. Do we ever mourn over where the church is? Do we ever mourn about where the culture has gone? Do we mourn about those who are immoral and trying to push their immorality on others? Do we mourn that there are folks that are dying without God and have never been forgiven of sins; and they're going to hell? Do we ever get to the place that it troubles us? Or are we just used to it? This visit from God for Daniel involved mourning. For 21 days, he's tore up to the place that he won't even eat. Second thing I see in the chapter is this: There is a man involved in this special meeting with God. There's a man involved. Verse 5 and 6. Some think this is an angel. I believe that it is the pre-incarnate son of God. I believe that it's a manifestation of the Son of God. Verse 5 and 6. You say, Why would you say such a thing? If you compare Daniel 10, verse 5 and 6, with Revelation, chapter 1, verse 13 through 15, you'll find out that they match precisely. And Revelation 1 is the Lord Jesus Christ. Like, take, for instance, Daniel 10 speaks of a girdle of fine gold. Revelation 1 speaks of the girt about the paths with golden girdle. Daniel 10 speaks of eyes as of a lamp of fire. Revelation 1 speaks of his eyes were as a flame of fire. Daniel 10 speaks of his feet like a color to polished brass. In Revelation 1, where the Lord Jesus has described his feet like unto fine brass. In Daniel 10, the voice of his words like the voice of a multitude. And then in Revelation, chapter 1, his voice as the sound of many waters that is volumous. All of those speak of the characteristics of the Son of God. Lennon speaks of his purity in Daniel 10; fine gold speaks of his deity; lightning speaks of his brilliance and brightness. Let me tell you, the Bible does say there's no need for sun or moon in the new Jerusalem; because the Lamb is the light thereof. The Son of God is brilliant and lightful, we're told, in that day. Eyes are his fire, we're told; that speaks of his omniscience; he's all seeing; he's all-knowing; he sees through everything. And not only that, but the feet were as brass, which speaks of his justice and judgment. And then, his voice was like that of a multitude or many waters that speaks of his authority. When he speaks, I'm telling you, he shakes things up; and he'll get your attention when he starts speaking. Whatever experience you have, Jesus Christ will be at the center and will be the focus; because that's what God's up to; and that's what he's all about. He's all about his Son; and us seeing his Son, who he is and what he's like and what he'll do and what he's done and what he'll do. I'm suspicious of anybody that says, Well, I've had an experience with God; you wouldn't believe; it's like Daniel's; and it knocked me out all kinds of stuff. But Jesus is never the center of it. I'm suspicious; because whatever the Lord's up to, the Son of God's at the center of what he's up to. Third truth I see in the chapter: When there's special meetings with God, you can expect a mixed reaction. A mixed reaction is involved. In verse number 7, "The men who were with Daniel didn't see the vision, but they felt it; they felt the vision-giver." And what did they do? When they felt God and his presence, they fled from him. They fled to hide themselves, we're told. That is common with sinful humanity. I'm reminded of Adam and Eve in Genesis, chapter 3; and God came walking; and they heard the voice of God walking in the garden; and they hid themselves, we're told. They'd fallen into sin; and all of a sudden now guilt, shame, fear was upon them, and conviction; and they hide from him. I read in the book of the Revelation, before the second coming, in that great tribulation period, men are gonna flee to the mountains and hide from the wrath of the Lamb. They don't want the Son of God; they're trying to hide from him! So it was with these men here. These men who are with Daniel, they flee and hide. Now, that's not what Daniel did. Daniel trembled in the presence of God; but he's seeking for God. That's the difference. There's a mixed response. Some people hear the gospel of Jesus Christ, have a visitation; the Holy Ghost doesn't work; and what do they do? Some run from a revival meeting. I'm not going back there. I'm not going back there! Others run to the Son of God in repentance and faith to get right with God. A mixed reaction is involved. In verse 8, we're told that Daniel saw the vision; it sapped the life out of him; he sensed his own weakness. And here are the words: "There remained no strength in me; I retained no strength; my comeliness was turned in me into corruption." He's weak; he senses his weakness; but not only he senses weakness; he senses his own wickedness. Out of the mouth of Daniel, a man who has done nothing but bragged upon by God and by others in Scripture, no negative word about him but out of his own mouth. He said, All of a sudden, in this special meeting with God, I realized that I was utterly weak and wicked. My comeliness... See, he's looking at himself differently than he did before. He thought he looked pretty good, comely; but after his visit with God, he sees his corruption. That's how it works. He just saw this perfect, special, perfect man from heaven, the Son of God, in vision. And now, when you see yourself up against him, he's big and I'm small; he's right and I'm wrong. It's common, Isaiah, in the presence of God, said, Woe is me; for I'm a man of unclean lips; and I realize I dwell among a people of unclean lips. The Lord Jesus miraculously said, Cast your nets out, Simon Peter! You guys cast your... You been fishing all night? Can't do it? Can't get in it? Cast your nets out! And what happens? They pull in the crowd; and the boat starts sinking; it's just so many fish in the... I mean, just fish from that whole... It's like the Son of God said, Hey, boys! Talking to all the fish in Galilee. He said, Get on in that net right there; and they're all trying to get in the net. And Simon Peter falls on his face before God; and he says, Depart from me; I'm a sinful man. A mixed reaction: Running from God or running to God? Which is it? Truth number four: What's involved in this heavenly interaction? Well, a message is involved. In verse 9, the Bible says, "Daniel hears the voice of his words; then was I in a deep sleep." Wouldn't be the first time somebody fell asleep while the word of God's being preached. "But a touch from God," in verse number 10, "woke him up." Verse number 10. And now, a message is coming; and he's gonna be touched by God And now, a message is coming, and he's going to be touched by God and taught by God three times in the chapter. Verse 10, verse 16, verse 18, Daniel received a heavenly touch. Let me say, when the teachings of God are touched by God, then you will get understanding. That's what the chapter emphasizes, this thing of getting understa... We're told that the reason Daniel is seeking God in the first place and fasting for 21 days and all is because he's sought understanding. He's wanting insight from God. Verse 1: "A thing was revealed unto Daniel." And then it says, "He understood the thing and had understanding of the vision." Verse 11: "O Daniel, a man greatly beloved, understand the words that I speak unto thee." Verse 12: "From the first day that thou didst set thine heart to understand." Verse 14: "The angels hasten now come to make thee understand." Verse 20: "Then said the angel, 'Knowest thou wherefore I come unto thee?'" Verse 21: "But I will show thee that which is noted in the Scripture of Truth." He's going to give him information. He's going to give him not only information, but insight. He's going to get discernment. He's going to be able to put the pieces of the puzzle together and grab what God's doing and saying. It's a wonderful thing. Daniel, at 90 years of age, is still growing in the grace and knowledge of our Lord. He still has more to learn. You know, sometimes us, we who've been at it for a while, we think we know it all. Let me tell you something that the book of Daniel has taught me in our preaching through it. There are a lot I didn't know. There's still a lot we don't know that we need to know. And the Lord's coming so that He can learn. He's going to give him understanding about the Scripture of Truth and the future, which 11 and 12 will teach us. God's here to give some understanding. 90 years of age, and Daniel's getting stuff he's never gotten before. One of the most amazing things, insights, Daniel probably went through life not understanding this, getting this at all, the content of this 10th chapter. You know what he finds out in this 10th chapter? He finds out that there are invisible battles taking place between angels and demons. Did you get that in the chapter? The angel says, "The first day that you sought understanding about what was going on, this angelic creature says, 'I headed your way 21 days ago.'" But he said, "There's one who's called the prince of the kingdom of Persia. He withstood me, hindered me 21 days, and I had to call for assistance from one whose name is given in the chapter, Michael." "One of the chief of the princes," we're told. He had to come help. I read about this, Michael, in Jude 9. Michael, the archangel. "These are not mere human princes." We know that because a human prince could not prevent an angel from getting to Daniel. In the days of Hezekiah, one angel smote 185,000 Assyrians in one night. They are powerful creatures. And this... So, a human prince? A human prince prevents an angel from heaven from getting to Daniel? Not a way in the world. The prince of the kingdom of Persia is trying to prevent an angel from fulfilling God's will and from getting... Preventing to keep... So that Daniel doesn't get the message from God. That tells me immediately that the prince of Persia that's described here is evil. Michael in the chapter is called one of the chief princes. That tells me there are multitude of... Or more than one princes, plural, heavenly princes. There's a hierarchy, because he's chief. You say, "How do you know?" Well, because he's more powerful than the other angel that came, because the other angel had to have helped, had to call for Michael, the one that's more powerful, to come and help him. The prince of Persia is an evil, angelic-type creature, a fallen angel, probably fell with Lucifer from heaven, an evil angel, a demonic spirit of some sort. On three different occasions, Jesus, in our New Testament, refers to Satan as the prince ... What? Say it, the prince, right? Oh, Jesus talked about a prince. He's the prince of this world. Gospel of John, three times, Jesus said it. He's the prince of this world. The prince of this world. Paul referred to him as the prince of the power of the air. The prince. That's why the Bible says in Ephesians 6, verse number 12, it says, "We wrestle not against flesh and blood." We're not talking about human battles. But we wrestle against prince... Prince... Some try to say, "Oh, these are just human in the princes." Not a way in the world. We wrestle against principalities and powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this world. There are dark, dark beings involved in this world, and the operation... We know sovereign God's permitted all of it for His purposes. But having said that, there's also spiritual wickedness in high places, and we're wrestling against prince... This, what we're... Invisible stuff, stuff that we don't even see. Daniel is getting revelation at 90 years of old age, new revelation, about the battles that are going on. Sometimes, you're praying, and God's already got the answer coming your way, but it doesn't get there for a while. And sometimes, it's because there are battles going on that we don't know anything about, demonic powers and angelic creatures. You say, "You're plum strange." I'll tell you this much: There's some of us in this building this morning who've seen demons manifested in people, talking with different voices, knowing things they shouldn't even have known. We're talking about real stuff, spiritual warfare. And you have... Let me tell you this: There's a prince over Persia. There's prince over Persia back in that day. Let me promise you, there's still demonic powers that are operating over Iran today, They hate Israel. But having said that, there are demonic powers operating in Maridoshia, trying to damn souls and drag them to hell. Daniel's getting a message, isn't he? He's getting a message. Finally, fifth truth. The might involved, M-I-G-H-T, the might involved. Daniel said in verse 8, "There was no strength in me. I retained no strength." Verse 10: "The touch of God comes, and behold, a hand touched me, sent me upon my knees, upon the palm of my hands, enabling him to wake up." He's been... Verse 9 said he was asleep. "The touch from heaven woke him up." Verse 11: "Enabling him to stand upright." Verse 14: "To make the understand, enabling him to see and discern God's truth, God's information." Verse 16: "Enabling him to speak, touched him so he could speak." Verse 18: "Touched him again," we're told, "and strengthened him." New empowering ability from God came to Daniel. He said, verse 19, "Be strong." "Yea, be strong." And I was strengthened. He confesses that God powered his life, spiritually powered, emotionally stabilized and powered. Physically, maybe. Looks like it, doesn't it? Even received physical power, received willpower. Here he is in a discouraged state, and now, he's got determination to do God's will, a fresh determination to do God's will. We call it revival. When a fresh visit from God gives fresh renewal and power in our hearts and our lives. And Daniel got it. The question this morning: Do you need it? Do you need it? What about your heavenly interaction? Your interaction with God? What about special meetings with God? Have you had any? Do you want any? If you do, these things will be involved. A mourning will be involved, a mourning over sin and disobedience to God. And then, if you're not in sin, a mourning over others who are in sin. A genuine burden, just like Daniel had. A man is involved, the God-man, Jesus Christ. Mixed reaction. Some are going to want Him. Some are going to run from Him, run to Him, run from Him. A message is involved. God's got something to teach you and me. And then He's got the power to enable you to get it, to understand it, to want it, to do it, let's stand. I'm glad God let us take a peek into this heavenly interaction, to see God's working in Daniel's life, and it certainly brings it home to us. Have you had any special meetings with God? Do you want any special meetings with God? I'm not hunting for signs, wonders, and miracles, any of that kind of stuff. I'm just hunting to be able to fellowship with God, and He'll let me know whatever else He's going to do. Are you hunting for God, hunting God for somebody else? What about the course of this world? I'm telling you, the churches are absolutely coming to the place that they're adapting to the culture. Just whatever Hollywood says, that's what we're going to do. "Oh, they said, 'We've got to make sure to have, you know, we can't have men and women's bathrooms. We've just got to have a mixed bathroom.'" This assembly ain't going to have one. Well, I know the Bible talks about all kinds of immorality and all, but we're not going to talk about any of that. Might as well write Ichabod over the door, because God's not going to be about it. Too many times, we're too comfortable. Down there in Babylon, they had all they needed, except they didn't have God. But they were just content with stuff. That was enough. It'll take more than stuff. Harder for a rich man to go through the eye of a needle than to get in the kingdom of God. Why? Because trust in riches instead of God. More understanding temporary instead of the eternal. And about half a word before we go.